All right. Okay, well. Welcome, everybody, to the November nineteen twenty twenty one. Full collaborative meeting. We're going to go ahead and do a roll call. I am Kelly Sheen. I'm the district manager of the Trinity County Resource Conservation District, and I am part of the facilitation team for this group. I will call out Pat Frost next, who is also part of the facilitation team.
So I'm here, obviously, so.
Okay. I'm going to go in order because it'll just be easiest. Stacy Smith, Shasta Trinity National Forest.
That is correct.
Arnold Whitridge.
Here.
Tara Jones, Shasta Trinity National Forest. Morning, Tara. Susan and Joseph Bauer.
Muted.
You're muted.
But they're obviously.
If you just hold down the the spacebar, you can unmute and toggle your mute. On and off. We see you, so we're gonna move on. Okay, Kenneth Baldwin.
Yeah, I'm here representing myself and BBW and Associates.
Very good. A new face that I've been corresponding with, Daniel Goodman, who's representing to the Chagdungpa.
Morning, everyone. Thanks for having me.
Bob Morris.
Morning, everybody.
Chris Losi, Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Everybody.
Ross and Susan Malino.
We're here.
Good morning.
Denise Wesley, Trinity County RCD.
Good morning.
Keith Greenwood, SPI.
Good morning.
Larry Glass with Safe.
Howdy.
Jennifer Mata, BLM.
Good morning.
Ramona Butts, new new face of name.
Morning, Shasta Trinity.
Shasta Trinity National Forest. Very good. Thank you. John Knight.
Present.
Scott Robinson.
President. Shasta Trinity.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome, Scott. Jerry Cousins.
Morning, everybody.
Kristen Lark, Six Rivers National Forest.
Morning.
Oh, everybody shifted around. Larry Winter, Highbaum Fire Safety Council.
Morning, everybody.
Dylan Sheedy, Watershed Research and Training Center.
Morning.
Christine Jordan, US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Good morning.
Morning, Christine. Robin Chen, I believe, with Shasta Trinity National Forest.
Mark Craig. Good morning, everyone.
Hi, Robin. Sarah Akeridge, Shasta Trinity National Forest, National Recreation Area.
Good morning, everyone.
Jenny Erickson, US Fish and Wildlife Service.
Good morning.
Hi, Jenny. And Tiffany Perez, NRCS Weaverville Field Office.
Hello, good morning.
And I'm admitting somebody right now on the phone.
Hello, it's Diane Foranza.
I'm sorry, who is that?
Diane Richardson Foranza Pini.
Oh, Diane. Hi, Diane. Hi, Foranza. Okay, and then with that, we are good to go. Pat?
So just let's just ask it. Is there anybody that just got missed because of the shifting little squares? No.
No, I'd like to ask a favor, especially for the Shasta Trinity folks. Could you tell us what your position is? There's some new names and what your role is in the forest? I mean, we know Chris.
And we know Tara.
And we know Tara, right?
But. And Sarah.
Morning, everyone. I am the acting ecosystem staff officer currently for the Shasta Trinity.
Thank you.
Ah, yeah, Scott. Oh, go ahead, Robin.
Oh, sorry. Hi, this is Robin. I am the NICO Planner for the South Fork Management Unit. Um.
Okay. Scott Robinson. I'm the timber management officer and forester on the west side and the training side of the Shasta.
Thank you.
Great. Okay.
Sorry, just just to let you know, we're also going to be joined by Laura Graham, who many of you know, she's our fuels officer here out of Weaverville. She'll be jumping on here to answer some of the joint chiefs types of questions, so.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tara. Okay, so quick quickly going through some of the general business. We sent out the collective memory from July, which was a long time ago since we last met. So if anybody has any corrections, please let Kelly or I know. We don't really have to go through them here unless they are really substantive errors. But if you if you see something you need corrected, just let us know. And the agenda, are there items that are time sensitive that I wasn't aware of or not aware of that need to be on the agenda? I want to thank Chris Losi. He's, I think, the only 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 line officer who sent me any suggestions for the agenda. So I was kind of going blind. So if there's anything that needs to be dealt with, please, please bring it up now so we can get it on the agenda. And related to that, you know, so I sent out my little. Go ahead, Chris.
Pat, I know Tara had stuff to share, of course, as well.
I'm sorry.
I said, I know Tara had stuff to share as well, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure she does. I mean, sure, everybody does. It's just that there may not be may not be specifically identified on the agenda. And I sent out my little hit the reset button white paper as much and it just we'll get to it later, but if you feel that the agenda isn't isn't accommodating that adequately, please let me know. We can adjust the agendas around. Or if some of you need to leave early, you know, we can adjust the schedule of how we how we do things to kind of make sure we have time for that. I will just say that as much as anything, it was probably written by me out of my frustration at, you know, almost two years now of Zoom meetings and just not seeing people in person. So take that, you know, as kind of one of the underscoring kind of elements of what I was doing. But but I also do think that it's time for us to kind of have that conversation. So are there any changes to the agenda? Anybody wants to see? Oh, Kelly, I should tell you, Carol is here. She's just off screen.
Okay.
Hey, Pat. Sorry, interruption. Kyle Rittenhouse was found not guilty on all charges. Wow.
Okay.
This is Stacy Smith.
Yeah.
I have not joined these previously, and I'm here at the request of Cary Otto, and I had understood that this has been kind of an ongoing agenda item for this group to ask about the fire cameras.
Sure.
I'm certainly willing to chat about that, but if you could give me an idea of when the window is, I was gonna.
How about how about? How about in that forestry issues that will be taken up right away and we could just do it right away?
That'd be great. Thanks.
Because it is a recurring theme, though. I left it off this time because frankly, I left it off because for the last three or four times it was on the agenda, the answer was nothing's really happened, so. Hopefully, now we got some some new news. So any other any other suggestions on the agenda?
Again, this is Diane Richards. I wasn't clear. Are we gonna discuss the Trinity National Forest? You know, sovereignty of the forest itself from Shasta, is that on the agenda? Are we going to discuss it during the forestry committee? What what's going on?
So I think you're referring to we sent out the the white paper from back in two thousand thirteen on co-management of public lands. Is that what you're you're thinking?
Correct.
So that that was more just as a context of try, you know, because not everybody was part of the collaborative in its formative period of two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. It was kind of provided more from a historical perspective of where where we were then so that we can talk about where we are now and where we want to go. So not specifically about having a separate Trinity National Forest, but just the the co-management kind of concept. You know, as kind of one of the early guiding principles of our group.
Okay, yeah, I get that, but maybe we should get talking about if we're not going to be standalone force, maybe we should join Six Rivers instead because we seem to have a lot more common in our ideals in the projects we want to run through than Shasta itself, the Shasta unit, so.
We could we could certainly certainly talk about that and some of the roadblocks that might exist for doing that. But yeah, what we can talk about, that would be part of that was sent out to be part of the reset the button conversation.
Okay, so is that on the agenda? Are we set the button conversations?
Yeah, eleven thirty to twelve thirty, setting the collaborative reset button.
That'll be a twelve to when?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven. Okay, good. Thank you very much. I didn't. I wasn't. Thank you.
No, that's okay. Okay, so trying to be mindful of time as we go along here. So maybe first thing then Stacy, want to talk about alert wildfire cameras?
Sure. So I'm Stacy Smith. I'm the lands and special uses officer. My office is over here in Mount Shasta on the Shasta McLeod Management Unit. And without knowing very much about what drove this agenda item, what I can tell you is that last night I got a request for a single alert wildfire camera on Plummer Peak. It is my understanding that PG&E has entered into an agreement with University of Nevada Reno to purchase and deploy a number of cameras on the Shasta Trinity, and those would all be linked to the Alert Wildfire system, which is available on the web for anyone to open and use. Despite the fact that it's been over a year since we had originally heard about that request, UNR has not submitted that application yet. My last conversation with them was that they were going to enter into an agreement with StanTech in order to have StanTech actually prepare that application and submit it. But it's been crickets from them since that time. We do have a request from GeoLink, and I spoke to her this morning. They are in a they're working under California Internet Limited Partnership. And apparently, their request is associated with also a statewide deployment of alert wildfire cameras working with UC San Diego. So a little different. I don't know if that's, I'm sorry. I'm working with a separate university. It sounds like that's fairly common to have the university be the point of contact for those cameras. She is going to send me a map of where their other sites are, and I asked her specifically to focus on the Trinity, the Shasta and Siskiyou County locations. And I'd be happy to share that when I get it, but just so you know, I only have a request for one camera at this point.
Thanks. Any any comments, thoughts from the group?
Yeah, I was. I'm still wanting to know if there's any possibility that we're going to see anything on Picket Peak or Horse Ridge Lookout, either one of those on South Fork Mountain, which would cover large areas of the county that are not able to be seen by any of the current cameras.
Good question. What I can tell you is that we just completed a proposal from PG&E themselves for weather stations, and both Picket and Horse and Knob Peak were the sites that PG&E asked for, and we approved installation of standalone weather stations. I don't know if the subsequent request from UNR through StanTech will include co-location of cameras at those locations. I don't think it'd be hard to do that. You know, the my experience with those cameras on non on sites without commercial power has been mixed. We have a comm site out here called Siskiyou Bear that's out, you know, kind of north of Bartle off Highway eighty nine. And Cowfire had installed the camera out there, and that's a non-grid site. They eventually went out and pulled the whole thing. I've I understand the technology is better now, but trying to get a camera to run without commercial power, you have to have solar, you have to have some battery backup or a generator or a combination of everything. So I think that's it's just trickier to get them to run, so.
Picket Peak does indeed have a county-involved cell tower on it that has both propane generation of power and solar generation. So maybe something could be worked out with the county in regards to that. And my other question is, does PG&E weather stations are those accessible to the public?
I asked that question, and I don't believe that data is accessible right now. You know, I had asked through our FireFolks whether PG&E's weather data was going to be uploaded onto a website that we had access to. And to my knowledge, I have not had a answer that says yes. It feels like that's an in theory yes, but not an in practice yes.
Some PG&E weather stations report to the US Weather Service and appear on their ROS.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's possible, but I don't think those have been deployed yet. They were only recently approved. So can I ask you, Larry? So Picket Peak has off-grid power.
That that would be correct. There's no there's no landline of PG&E that goes to it, but it does. There is a generation facility there that's, like I said, a bank of propane tanks and generators that operate the cell tower that's Verizon cell tower, but it's through a cooperative situation with Trinity County. So Trinity County has some say in what goes on there.
So so to provide Stacy, you a little bit of context and other newer Forest Service people and people joining the today. It's been probably now it was probably two thousand nineteen, do you think, Kelly?
Yeah.
That the collaborative set up an ad hoc committee to to develop a white paper that we provided to the Forest Service in two thousand nineteen, looking at locations where we thought alert wildfire cameras would work because of access to power, existing infrastructure, that sort of thing. And we had been and there already are two cameras in Trinity County, and we were looking to just add to that network, and it was through a cooperative effort between the University of Nevada Reno and UC San Diego.
Okay.
They they are involved in this program together.
And Pat, I know, you know, when this came to my attention last year, we sat down with our our FireFolks and came up with our wish list of locations. Do you know for the Trinity County locations, did you did you work with the Forest Service FireFolks on that side, or do you know if your list got incorporated?
Our list, they they had our list. Whether it got incorporated is is hard to say.
We had worked more.
Know if, you know, if you had a contact with the FireFolks on the west side over there.
Okay, and we've had we've had multiple conversations and meetings with FireFolks, Rangers, you know, everybody, so.
Well, without knowing for sure, and actually without knowing what the heck StanTech's eventually going to submit to us. You know, at some point when we get that list, that will go up on the schedule of proposed actions as a project, and we will put that list of sites up. So it'd be good to verify that, you know, your asks got included, or if they didn't, why they didn't get included.
Can I submit our what we worked up collaboratively here to use directly, Stacy?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Could you put your email in the chat, please?
And I think Tara has something to say.
I say yes, but let's see if this is.
I was just asking to make sure I get it too, so I can double back with my FireFolks and and try to get some answers.
I'll forward it to you as well, Tara.
Okay, and Chris, just so that Chris has it too.
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, and I don't know if you get it, well, the minutia, but when that comes in, both Chris and Tara get it. So before it goes anywhere, it goes across their desk to review and concur before it goes forward as a project.
Okay, Keith has a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, this is for for Stacy. What obstacles do you see to having those cameras placed on Forest Service sites? Because I'm wondering if that might be part of the issue why you're not getting so many applications because some of those folks, I don't know if it's the same people, but I'm sure there's overlap or contacting other owners of sites to put cameras out. So is there an obstacle in particular that is maybe critical with the Forest Service that might be keeping them from being placed on your sites?
That's a great question. I've had probably six conversations with UNR. I've had conversations. I haven't had. I have a conversation with StanTech. I have, you know, we have gone through that list. I've given them advice on what I think, you know, which pigs fly and which pigs don't fly and for what reasons. And I, you know, if it's me, somebody ought to tell me, but I I have tried pretty hard to facilitate making this as easy as I can to just get me the project, you know, just get me the project. We can start on it and we can fine tune it as we go, but literally I cannot do anything until you get me the ask. So, you know, I I don't know. I they don't ever call me. I call them.
Okay. Okay, anything else on this? Well, it's it's good to know it's still in the hopper.
That's encouraging, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll get you one.
So.
I have a I have a question, Pat.
Sure.
This is Larry in High Palm. I so I'm if I understand right, the Forest Service isn't looking at doing this on their own. They're expecting a private entity to step in and and request to do it on sites that they prefer, or why isn't the Forest Service just taking this on?
And that is outside my world of influence. I don't know if the Forest Service is chasing cameras as an internal proposal. What I, you know, all I can speak to is when it comes up as a permit application.
I mean, that was kind of our, you know, the collaborative's original ask was for the Forest Service to kind of take the initiative to encourage UC San Diego because they what UC San Diego, you know, in our conversations with them was they're totally funded as far as cameras installation, all that. They, you know, they just looking for as many sites that make sense as possible to have these cameras installed.
Yeah, this morning when I was chatting with Candace from GeoLinks, that was the first time that I'd heard it was UC San Diego that was the primary driver. All my communication has been with UNR. And and they clarify, you know, the original ask was from PG&E, but then he very quickly clarified to me, no, 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 we're buying the cameras, but the actual proposal is going to be UNR that's going to actually install and operate. So, yeah.
Okay, so we probably need to move on at this point, but I think we we have you now as a contact to send things to. I will also look for, I have a a presentation that UC San Diego gave us to use that talks about what are the requirements? What does a site need to have to be a viable site? I'll see if I can find that and make sure that gets to you also.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. I, you know, I I definitely was concerned after Cowfire, you know, kind of installed and then retreated.
Yeah.
Um, that was distressing.
So I I I it's risky to put on the agenda fire updates because it's been such aggressive fire seasons the last two years. So my intent here really was not to go over, you know, how big were the fires and when did they, you know, when were they contained and, you know, all that kind of stuff. But really, give this as an opportunity for 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 the agency folks who are looking at what to do now that the fires are out in the short term to have a little time to kind of update us, give us an opportunity to weigh in potentially or begin to weigh in on some project ideas. I know that Chris has one in particular, and I think Kelly sent a map out late yesterday to everybody, but hopefully he can also throw it up on the screen for everybody who's looking at this on video. So I kind of wanted to focus focus there, you know, for a little bit, recognizing that it's going to be a long slog and and, you know, can take multiple conversations, reminding folks last year after the August complex, we as a collaborative actually had one or two special meetings to speak, to talk specifically about post-fire rehab project design, and I would certainly be open to doing that again if need be. So I thought maybe we would start with Chris. And again, try to be mindful of the time that we have. It's our two and a half hour meeting. And kind of go from there, and I'm going to get coffee.
Everybody see the map?
Yes, we can see it.
Thank you.
Hey, folks. Okay, I was thinking I'd probably go second, but I can I can adjust. No problem. You know, if you don't mind, I'd like to I'd like to give you an update on pilot because I think that's on people's minds. And so I think if I can give an update on pilot, that'll put some things into context. Because I know there's definitely a concern about how us taking on more work is impacting our old work. And so I want to let everyone know that we have responded to all of the comments received during the comment period. I think one of the comments maybe needs two more sentences from two of our specialists. But otherwise, the comments are responded to. We've also updated the EA. Randy Paris is actually, I asked her to attend the meeting, but she's actually wanted to work on finalizing some things in the pilot EA to go from draft to final. And then we have our first draft of the decision notice Fonzie that we've got a lot of good information there, and we're we're consulting with our supervisor's office on that. We'll be starting that next week. So the pilot project is really moving forward. A lot is getting, you know, stuff is getting done. I know that it's 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 frustrating for folks to see how long it's taken, and it's frustrating for all of us. But we are making real progress, and I anticipate we will be able to start the objection process in, if not in, if not in December at the first of the year. And that was actually something that that Pat and I talked about, which was if the collaborative would rather us wait until January first to start the objection, or if it's if you're good with having this, having the objection start as soon as we're ready, but I know there's sometimes an issue about you know, having comment periods over the holidays. So we could we could push that if we needed to, but after the objection process starts, that's a forty-five day objection filing period. So individuals who have commented on the scoping or the draft can can send can send in objections, only those individuals. And then after the forty-five day period, since this is a decision being signed by our forest supervisor, the regional forester will make a decision on any objections that are filed, and that's a forty-five day process. Sometimes there are changes requested by the regional foresters. Sometimes there are negotiated agreements between the objectors and the Forest Service, so those. between the objectors and the Forest Service, so those would need to be adjusted. But if there is none of that, then then it can be signed 50 days from the opening of the objection period. If there are objections, then it's 90 days. And possibly maybe two weeks to adjust if, if that is necessary. But we're looking at having a signature in April, January, February, March, April. And we have timber sales that are already laid out. And, you know, Scott, I don't want to take up a whole lot of time on this, but, but Scott has been, Robinson is working on this, and he can always give more information about that. So I just, I wanted to lead off with pilot because I feel like everyone knows that, you know, we, you can take on too much. So if you don't mind, Pat, I, I did that. And if there, I'm thinking maybe if there's questions about pilot, we can either take them now or we can postpone it till the end.
Let's save the, save questions to the end. And, you know, it's not, it's probably not as time sensitive as the other McFarland project.
So I'll try to keep this high level initial. What you see in front of you is a first cut of a map for a project that is mostly within the McFarland fire footprint, partly outside of the fire footprint, but all on the southern edge of Wildwood. And I want to share with the collaborative, a lot of the thought process that went into developing this. And of course, to also lead off with, this is an initial cut. We really, although there's a lot of lines on a map, this is an initial cut of what we think we may be able to do. But I want to stress that we looked really hard and, and looked at your fire kill to fuel breaks concept. And there's a lot of that that I think we really like and we can really get behind. We want to use wildfire to create a, we want to use the quote opportunity of a wildfire to create conditions that will stop the spread of fire in the future. We want to treat in WUWE, Wild Interface. We want to be able to treat everything within a fuel management zone, whether it's brush or green trees or burned. We want to be able to treat all of that. We want to be able to use CE's category exclusions like has been mentioned, maybe not in that project, but in others. And we want to use fire salvage to facilitate the creation of these features on the landscape. So all of these things, I think that either, either in the fire kill the fuel breaks or other things that I've heard from you over the years are things that we really want to utilize in responding to fire. In addition to that, though, I think that there are other considerations we'd like to be able to, to take into account. One is that we'd want to be able to treat between the fuel breaks. In other words, we want to be able to do more than just burn piles in fuel breaks. We want to be able to apply broadcast burning to the areas that's in between fuel breaks. We also would like to, these, these, one of the issues that we run into with long, narrow fuel breaks is that they tend to impinge on multiple watersheds, multiple owl cores. And so they, you know, because of that, we, there's an advantage to kind of keeping these more compact. So rather than having a long line to have, to have lines, but lines that kind of curve so that you're not impacting a huge portion of the landscape. With the tip, tip first project, the, the big 2015 fire salvage project, we had 90 owl cores that we had to count for, just tremendous amount of work that came into that. And we want to be able to do some reforestation. You know, there are areas that are not, there are areas that are, that are far from seed sources. We want to be able to do reforestation. We want to be able to do reforestation in areas that you know, are not going to be naturally reseeded, and we need to be able to remove those trees before we can replant, because otherwise they'll fall down in 10 years and, and, and burn everything. And we would like, and there are needs still to do thinning. There are always needs to do thinning, and we want to do the right treatment on the landscape. So what, what we've come up with, and I see that Tara is talking, so maybe I can just talk for two more minutes and then we can go to Tara and come back. If that's good. But what, what we put together as a first cut is a project that combines fuel management zones. Fuel management zones, if you're looking at the map, are in the light blue. Combines that with landscape scale burning. That is the cross hatching from the southwest to the northeast. Adds in some, some area salvage. That is the orange and probably the yellow. The yellow has, is, is, we, we have a little more questions on, on that, but the orange is definitely high severity, need for rest, need for reforestation. And, and even some, and even some green harvest in areas that haven't been, that, that are still amazingly highly stocked, given the fact that the fire in some places did not burn terribly heavily. So this is, this is a wish list. This is everything we'd like to do. Also, a couple of things about this that are really, I think advantageous, we're in the WUWE, we're on the southern edge of community of Wildwood. And if you look at that black, those black and white dots, that area was actually analyzed as part of the Dubicella CE of a couple of years ago. It burned pretty high severity, unfortunately. But the, the beauty of that is that we've actually got an area that has been surveyed. And because it's been surveyed, that should reduce the amount of future work. And so just some top line numbers, and then, then I'll, I'll take a break, come back and we can talk more if you want, or we can talk another day. We're talking about an entire area of this being about two and a half thousand acres, of which half of that is high, needs to be done before the, there is really no chance of, of selling timber. So half of that 2,500 needs to be done right away. I'd like to do something like a phase one. Half of that can wait, because it's either prescribed fire that doesn't need to be done in the next year. It's green tree thinning that does not have a ton of rotting wood or decaying wood, or it's actually not in the fire footprint. So if you look at that kind of black and smoky colored line, the black and gray line that goes from the north west to the southeast, that's actually the fire perimeter. So everything northeast of there actually didn't burn in the fire. But there's still a need to protect Wildwood. There's still a need to protect that corridor along the 36. So that needs to be treated and we need fuel breaks there, but it doesn't need to be created. They don't need to be completed or completely analyzed by the time we, you know, with the same need to get, to get timber harvested before it rots. Within that phase, phase one area to the southwest of that line, about 40% has already been surveyed. So that really gives us a leg up in, in analysis. And then just on other top line information, what we're talking about here, this is about of the areas that we're talking about harvesting trees, a thousand of those acres is within those fuel management zones. And then another 500 acres is outside of those fuel management zones. So this is very heavy to the fuel management zones with the realization that there are other things that could really benefit on the landscape. I hope you'll consider this. I hope, you know, if we, if I can't come back to talk anymore about it this, today, I would ask, the most important thing really probably is that in order for us to have any real chance of having the wood pay, it's that way out of the woods, of having these fuel breaks at least partly pay for themselves is to get this project scoped by the end of the calendar year. And so I'm presenting this map to all of you for your input, for your feedback. And like I said, we may not be able to do it all today, but I would, I would encourage you, because I'm taking some time off, some much needed user lose time off, I would encourage you to reach out to Robin Chin, that's R O B I N dot C H I N at USDA.gov. And and speak to her, present, present your concerns, present your suggestions. But the hope that we need to be able to come up with a scoping in a month or so to get, to have really any opportunity of getting this to work. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Pat, because I know that, and I wasn't aware, had I been aware of that meeting, I would have recommended that Tara speak first, but I want to make sure others have time. So.
Okay. Yeah, so why don't we hold questions, comments for Chris for a few minutes? And Tara has a meeting with Supervisor Cox at 11 o'clock, so give her a few minutes. I'm not sure if she'll make it back before we, we close out our meeting. So.
I think, I'm hoping, thank you, Pat. I'm thinking I will get back for the reset conversation, especially we seem to be a little bit behind schedule. So that should work out great for me to, to be on time for the reset conversation. So I want to start with number one, to let you know that Forest Supervisor Rachel Burkey sends her regrets that she couldn't attend today. She is sick and has been off of work the, the last few days. So wanted to pass that along. So to put the big picture of Trinity County, as, as you said, we had a lot of fire on the landscape, about 300,000 acres approximately in Trinity County alone burned this last summer. As you know, on the west side of the Shasta National Forest, we have one planning team. So it will be important to find what, what our priorities are and, and where, where best to invest our time with that planning team to, to, to treat the most acres, to protect the most communities, to, to be the most effective. So that's, that's something we're working through at this time. I wanted to let you know, we will still have some pressure repair work that's going on in both fires. And if you would like, and this question's for Pat, and I guess Kelly, I can send you the links for the bear reports for all three fires, if you haven't already received them.
That'd be great.
Do that. I did send Kelly, yesterday I sent off, I got all three ravage maps together, as well as a big picture. I got that sent to Kelly and Larry Winter. I have a printed copy that I will get out to Highland Palm as promised. So we'll get you that map as well. Also let you know, as you know, fire wise, we have a large, very large, mind boggling debris flow on Coffee Creek that we're working with Sarah, because Sarah on the NRA to facilitate disposal of some of that material as we work with the county and partner with the county to try to get that come up with a plan to get that material out of the, out of the creek. So again, so I sent you the ravage data. We're beginning to look at the post-fire planning efforts and, and where does it make sense in Trinity County to, to invest the planning that, that it will take to get, to get some treatments on the landscape? And, and what type of planning effort that will be along those lines? So I, I'm doing some mapping stuff and, and I'm kind of at the, I'm sharing what I have with, with the collaborative so that as we figure out where we want to go and, and what makes some sense, what's the right fit, then we'll do that together and, and have those conversations on the, on the very, very front end. So that's kind of where I'm at. Also to let you know, the region is taking a look at post-fire. We had so much fire in the, in the North State that the region is taking a look at, at the impacts of that, of the fires and, and helping us come up with a post-fire plan. And to speak to that, just to give you an idea of what they're doing and, and where they're at in the process, I asked Ramona to go ahead and give you guys the, the briefing on what the region's doing up here in Trinity County. So I will pass the baton to her, go meet with you all for half an hour and race back here as quick as I can. And in my absence, Laura is on to answer any questions if I'm not here.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I'm, I'm sorry it's such a rushed schedule, maybe.
That's okay. It's okay. It's great just to be able to meet.
Yeah. Okay, Ramona, in, in a short period of time, what's the region doing?
Yes, I've got a quick update for all of you. So recognizing the amount of fire that we did have in the northern part of the state, the regional office is helping all of us put together a number of rapid assessment teams to take a look at the fires. And that team will hopefully be starting here on the Shasta Trinity, looking at the west side fires. So the monuments, the river complex, and then possibly the McFarland as well. And the idea behind these rapid assessment teams are to look at sort of the scope of potential activities within those fire footprints that may be available to us for, for restoration or for other activities. And to also help us to prioritize those, give information to the, the leadership of the forest and to the communities as well. And then hopefully leverage that for additional funding to assist with some of the, the post-fire work. So that, that is going to be happening shortly for the west side forests, for the Trinity County area. We also have a Hazard Tree EA that will be done by the region. And so.
I think, I think that we have received the, the, the notice of that. So I think people are aware of that.
Okay, great. And then the last piece that I wanted to share is that many of you are aware that we were looking at starting plan revisions for the forest plans on the Shasta Trinity and some of the other surrounding forests that has been put on what they're calling a pause until October of 2022, so the next fiscal year for the federal government to kind of put all hands on deck to help with post-fire restoration activities throughout California.
Great. Okay, yeah. So I'm seeing, trying to figure out what best to do. Maybe quickly go back to Chris and his McFarland project to get a sense of where the collaborative would like to would like to weigh in or help out. Any, any thoughts, everybody?
Want to put the map back up, maybe?
Uh, sure. But it's, though, though it's harder than for us to see who's, who's trying, trying to, you're trying to.
Oh, yeah, no problem. By the way, I just put in the, I just put in the chat box some contact information for Robin and I. I think it's actually, I included my emails. Please, please send your, your thoughts to me and Robin. I'll be out quite a bit over the next two weeks, but I will read them when I get back. And, and then Robin will be around and will be able to, you know, hunt down a lot of questions and she can reach me too.
Okay. So Larry, you just glass, you just came live, picture, you got a question?
Well, more of a, an answer to a question you just threw out, or, or Chris just threw out, and that is that the way the collaborative best interacts with the agency is through field trips. When we're actually out on the ground and that we're not on, you know, with some one dimensional map, trying to imagine what the agency's talking about, when we're actually on the ground, looking at the vegetation that's there and not there, and the conditions, that's where we do our best work at collaboration.
Yeah. I would love to, I would love to do a field trip. I don't know. I'm, I'm, my time in Trinity County is, is much less than, than yours and my knowledge of what, of what the collaborative will, would be interested in is, is less than yours. I will be gone, I will be out of town actually until December 7th. I would love to, to have a field trip. I think that if we do a field trip, we need to do it in early December in order to have a finalized design, or at least a design that's ready for scoping by, by the end of December. So if folks are interested in a field trip up to Wildwood and, in early December, and if folks think the roads are going to be passable, we could probably even get a little plowing done. But I would, I would love to, to take you all out there. And I think, I think we are able to. Scott, you're, you're, you will be available at least some in early, in early December, yes?
Yep, I'll be, be around.
Sir, Chris, are you suggesting have, have that meeting before you get back on December 7th? Because then we're starting to talk more mid, mid-December. So something that Scott would, would lead?
Oh, no, I was still calling like the eighth, ninth, I was thinking like the eighth, ninth or 10th.
Okay.
Would be early December. Or even following Monday. But, but early enough so that, because once you get to December 17th, you know, now you're, now you're Christmas week.
Right.
We really need to have it this time, yeah.
So how do we, Keith Greenwood has his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention to Chris, you know, on a two dimensional, I think Larry's correct. I, I haven't been with the collaborative very long, but I, I do know in talking to some others that for buy-in, I think it's going to take an onsite visit. For buy-in, I think it's going to take an onsite visit. Essentially, I like the approach that you're taking. Chris, because dealing with it on a more of a watershed level, I think gives us a better. Vision of what the desired objective will be for that particular watershed and what its needs are. I think if you skip around and don't treat. Enough in one area, you don't really, people can't get as good of a picture. So thanks for doing that.
Thank you. And I want to say, if I can, just, I don't know, you're, Keith, you're on the land management side, so I don't know how much. You are involved in the in the timber purchasing side of your organization, but. You know, for this to really be a meaningful project, we need to to be able to to make, you know, especially these fuel management zones viable. We really want to be able to to sell some of this timber. And if if the mills are are not at all interested in this, then, you know, maybe, you know, maybe this is a different project, but. I'm hopeful that there will be some interest in. You know, salvage logs from National Forest and Trinity County. I think this project may be the only, well, at least on this, on the Shasta Trinity side of the forest, I haven't heard Kristen Lark's proposal, and I don't know what's going on on. On the Six Rivers, but at least on this side, there may not be many opportunities and but hopefully there's some interest.
Okay, Larry, glass.
So, Chris, I, I, when we do these field trips, typically, we try and get representatives of the mill. Keith would be there, I'm sure. And if we can get retired SPI person Tom Waltz usually on the scene, we usually get Joe Miller from the mill out there. And maybe Brian Taylor. And that will give you a rounded, you know, plus me as an environmentalist, you'll have. A well-rounded sort of view then of what's possible and and what's commercially viable and all that. So that's why I'm recommending some sort of visit to the site.
So how, so that we don't spend all of our time trying to figure out the the logistics, how's the best way to get this thing scheduled? Can Kelly Sheen, are you pretty much around? Could you take the lead on trying to coordinate a field trip?
I can do.
You could coordinate. Scott, again, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. Would you be the point? Could you be the point of contact? I'll be available. Feel free to call me, Scott, but I'm not going to be checking my email with enough regularity to really. To really make a lot of decisions, so or to 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 kind of be on the ball, but. Scott, if you, would you be able to be the point of contact with with Kelly to set up a meeting in one of those two early weeks in December?
Yep, that's not a problem. I'll be around.
Okay, well, we'll call that good for now then. Thanks. So we're going to shift a little bit and get BLMs if they've got any. Any forestry issue updates real quickly and then go to Kristen Lark. Kristen might have already left.
Hi, Pat. We can be, I think, pretty quick on the forestry and fuels side. We are working on a few small fire rehab projects, mostly weeds and hazard tree removals for our portions of the. Monument fire and the McFarland fire from this year. Not enough. Timber burnt on BLM to warrant any salvage operations, so not focusing on that. We are. Working on a small green sale in the Weaverville Community Forest that many of you heard about last night during the community public meeting. And on numerous fuels projects throughout Trinity County. The one thing that I did want to emphasize in the kind of forestry and fuels portion is California BLM. Many of you might be familiar with our roadside hazard fuel programmatic NEPA document that we did a few years ago. Focused on power line rights ways, but mostly on a forestry take. California BLM is now moving forward with a programmatic fuels. EA that will be kicking off here in the next month or so that will look at. Fuel breaks. Along property boundaries and different habitat types, so will be statewide NEPA document. So we should be seeing some scoping material on that, I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks. So. Moving forward, trying to be proactive and getting some larger scale NEPA documents done that we can tier two at the field level. And I'm the management rep on that NEPA document for the state. So if anybody has any questions when you see the scoping material. Let me know and I'll get it. Kelly, when I get the official scoping letter, I'll send it so we can send it out to the collaborative.
Great, thank you.
And that is it in the interest of time.
Okay. So I I think that. Kristen had to leave at eleven o'clock also. Is there somebody else? Nope. Okay.
I'm here.
You're in this, you're in the same place you were on Monday.
Right. Hopefully my sign's not backwards to you guys. Okay, very good. All right. Yeah, I hear you. So the first thing I wanted to say is that the Capitol Christmas tree was delivered today in Washington. To the Capitol, the architect of the Capitol, very exciting. So Ted is there. In person and is why he's not here today. So hit our Facebook page and you can see all the festivities of the delivery. So. A good opportunity to cheerlead Trinity County and I'm taking that opportunity every time I have to. Talk about our community and the good work that we do here. So got that out of the way. Moving forward, so our big project, of course, is the August Complex Restoration EA. Our specialists are finalizing their reports. The timeline for us is to have a preliminary EA out for comment. At by the end of January. So that's what we're looking at. Well, I think that we will hit that. Close, so we'll have that out for comment period. I will do a Zoom meeting like I did for the scoping comments and then from that. Develop a field trip for, you know, interested parties. Thirty day scoping or correction comment period is what we're planning for for that EA. And if all goes well, we could have a signed decision in. Late spring. If we have to go through an objection period and and get all that out of the way. We would be looking towards the end of June before we could implement. Out of that. Project, I wanted to just hit, highlight what our timber sales are, if you're interested in that. We have four timber sales. Three have been cruised that will be coming out of that restoration project. We have Waterspout at about nine million board feet and eight hundred acres. Lost Creek at about ten million board feet and eight hundred and sixty acres and Trout Creek at about the same ten. And eight hundred and thirty-seven acres. Little bit, sorry about that. My PC was doing something. Long Ridge. Down by Ketten Palm is a smaller sale at six million board feet and two hundred and twenty-four acres. The first three timber sales mentioned are in the upper Mad watershed. And so we have areas in there targeted for reforestation as part of our project. So just as a reminder, this restoration EA. Was. All inclusive, so we're doing our hazard tree abatement. Our timber sales, you know, salvage sales, and then the planting and the restoration work with. Invasive plants, you know, botany and the oak woodlands kind of all in one. So we're, we've had a little change in leadership. We've got Donna Pepin from the NRA helping with that with the ID team and we still are using. NCRC to help with the preparation of that document. So. Then the next thing is, I had a meeting yesterday with. With Dylan Sheedy in the Watershed Center about a modification for approximately nine hundred thousand dollars that we have an existing. Agreement with them for fuels reduction work that we're modifying to take into account what the August complex did to the footprint of work. So I'm, I'm not going to go into detail on that one. I believe, I thought Dylan was here. Would help me report out on that, but if he's not here, then I might have to do that. But in short. We're, we're going to focus on, oh, Dylan's there. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let him talk about that when we get to him. Well, actually, Dylan, do you want to, are you prepared? Yeah, real quick.
Yeah, yeah, real quickly. All the money that was allocated to Shasta, or sorry, with Six Rivers will remain with Six Rivers. It's going to be. A lot of it about. In the first forty-eight Kelsey Peak Beaver Slide projects that we're used to hearing about, it's going to get kind of wrapped up into one August complex restoration project. Most of that's going to be site prep work for future planting efforts, so that'll include thinning, loft and scatter, mastication. Potentially air curtain burning where maybe units aren't logged or sold. And then Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District just was awarded their. Forest Health project that will pay for the planting and will supplement. Or the Forest Services efforts and it'll provide about a hundred and fifty thousand seedlings to plant in these areas that we site prep. Through our project. It'll also include some more mastication on the Mad River Ridge fuel break, which you all know about. And hopefully some prescribed burning in Mad Gap Ridge and some other D seventy and some other areas on on Mad River Ridge. So that's a quick synopsis.
Thanks. I appreciate that. Additionally. We, let's see. We, we have, so we have a rack proposal out, you know, that hasn't been awarded yet, but we're hopeful that the Three Forks. Fuels Reduction Project that's in front of the rack will also get awarded and that's in that same footprint. So we're, well, you know, we have a lot of. Partnerships going on in that same area. So, okay, then we have still been moving forward. We're kind of winding down our suppression repair. And and the bear work and the storm control stuff all was worked in conjunction. Under that suppression. Sorry, my PC. Under that suppression repair. Plan, we were able to complete our first prescribed burning in a few years. So we had large machine piles that were up on Mule Ridge. That were. Dead, dead trees, dead standing trees from the twenty fifteen fires that were part of the. August complex that Cal Fire Dozer Lines went through and quite, quite a big mess there, you know, over several years. So. We accomplished about ninety. Machine piles and probably about twenty acres of accomplishment there. And so that. We're proud of the fact that we were able to use P code to fund that as part of our suppression repair because we had included that in our plan. So we have more work planned in the whole August footprint with some prescribed fire like Dylan said. All right, so I hit all that. Air curtain burner, we've had the air curtain burner on loan from Cal Fire. Kurt McCray reached out and said they probably need to take it back in January. So we may or may not have it, although he did email me again and said, well, you might be able to have it a little bit longer. So. Our plan is to move that air curtain burner up to Mule Ridge and continue some fuel reduction and prescribed fire up there using that. As well. So let's see, what else do I have? In the future, so the.
We, we really, you're going to need to wrap up because it's, it's. We've got a lot yet to still talk about.
You do. All right. So anyway, I'll just wrap that up. We're part of the enterprise. You guys have the. The scoping letter from the region about the hazard tree. We, for my district and can, with Shasta Trinity, we have South Fork Mountain Road. As part of that. And then we're looking at doing some more work with fire and fuels. EA is still not signed. I don't know, we'll have a signed decision for that. But we have some plans to do treatment around private land on on the Ranger District, so I'll leave it at that and. Thanks.
Thanks. Any, any questions for Kristen? Okay, seeing none. The only thing I really wanted to cover from the Joint Chiefs was the status of the two thousand twenty-one. Application, so is, who's, is there somebody from NRCS? I see Tiffany. Is Aaron on? Do we have an update?
Hi, everyone. I was not given an update by Erin. I am acting DC and she will be out. Until later this month, the twenty ninth, but we can get that to you guys in email to you.
Well, there may be no update to be had. Thanks. Okay. So we're running a little, so any, any, you go ahead, Kelly.
I just had one thing. I did actually get an email from somebody at the region that basically said that they hadn't heard anything quite yet. And this was earlier this week and they said it could be any day.
Okay.
So, but nothing's dropped yet. I believe that they were probably waiting for the budget to get approved.
Infrastructure bill and all that. Yeah, okay. Okay, so anybody, anything else on forestry issues? So we're running a little late, but we have been wanting to have a presentation on kind of the barred owl, spotted owl. Conflict issues, and I believe we have US Forest Service and are you, US Fish and Wildlife Service and potentially. No, Keith, were you going to jump in on that at least? From the private landowner side of things, but. I think we had Kathleen or we have. Christine Jordan.
Was taking that.
So do you want to kind of rock and roll?
Absolutely. And I do apologize. I'm in our field office to have the benefit of better internet connectivity. And I'm on two monitors but don't have a webcam, so. Waving at all of you and smiling and thank you for your patience.
Jenny here too, right?
Pardon?
You have Jenny is.
Yes, yes, I'm here. And if you'd like, I can turn my camera on so you can see at least one of us.
Okay, so go for it.
You should be able to share your screen if you have materials to share with us.
I absolutely do have materials to share with you and wanted to let you all know as well. I can make the. The presentation available. In either the PowerPoint format or a PDF format, so. And thank you, everybody, for your patience. I know that there was a question that came up regarding barred owl. Interactions and management, I believe it was at the March. Meeting this year and just other delays and. Postponed meetings have. Pushed us to today, so.
It's up.
So can you tell me what screen you're seeing? Like, do you see a note screen or do you just see?
Status of Northern Spotted Owl. It's the first, first slide.
Okay.
And we do see your notes as well, Christine.
What about now?
That's perfect.
So I am Christine Jordan. I'm a fish and wildlife biologist in the Wyreka Field Office. My primary duties here are to work with the Shasta Trinity National Forest as well as the Clamath National Forest. And Reading, Northern California, Reading BLM Office as well as Whiskey Town National Park. And primarily working in Section Seven in our inter-agency cooperation and coordination. So when the Forest Service or the BLM. Or the park has a proposed action that may affect a listed species, they're required to. With the Fish and Wildlife Service on those effects. We have a streamlining agreement in place for consultation on projects that has been working fairly well. And I am not that familiar with all of the nuances of. The experimental removal that has occurred across the range for the barred owl and trying to reduce its impacts on the northern spotted owl. So this presentation is, it's fairly high level. And I will do my best at the end to answer any questions, but I did want to let you all know that Robin Bound. Who is up in what we refer to as our Legacy Region One. She was the, basically the leader for the full NEPA review on the barred owl removal experiment. And she is heading up a working group. To develop the barred owl management strategy, but she. But she told me that, you know, there were additional questions or additional information, you know, from the Trinity Collaborative about this work, that she would be happy to meet with you again and, you know, address those questions. So I just wanted to share that. I'm gonna run through the status of the northern spotted owl, uh speak a little bit about barred owl expansion, uh speak to their interspecific competition and what we've learned you know, over the past thirty years and trophic cascade effects. And can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yes.
Thanks, Jenny. So um, there's three subspecies of spotted owl um in the, in North America. There's the northern spotted owl, which we're all very familiar with. Uh, there's the California spotted owl, which is in the Sierra Nevada range as well as the southern coast ranges of California. And then there's the Mexican spotted owl. The California spotted owl is a state listed, or it's a state species, sorry. It's not listed at the state level or the federal level, but it is a state species of special concern. And in November of twenty nineteen, the Fish and Wildlife Service did make a not warranted finding, um which basically means we found no uh reason to list the species under the Endangered Species Act, but rationale for that um included the protection measures that are in the two thousand four Sierra Nevada Forest Plan Amendments. Um, and then also the Southern California uh revised land management plans. So there's numerous conservation measures for the California spotted owl in those land management plans. Um, and then they also spoke to, you know, the increases in additional mechanical thinning to help reduce, reduce the risk of large-scale high severity fire and barred owl removal. So barred owl removal does occur, you know, for the California spotted owl as well under issued research permits. Um, but again, that was one of the reasons that the service determined a not warranted listing. As many of you are familiar, the NSO was listed as threatened in nineteen ninety um primarily because of widespread habitat loss and inadequate mechanisms to conserve the species. Um, that resulted in the development of the Northwest Forest Plan, which is also um beginning to um undergo revisions. And in two thousand eight, the service prepared the initial recovery plan for the owl. Uh, we are required by the Endangered Species Act to develop and implement a recovery plan for our listed species. Um, it basically guides the planning and implementation of recovery actions um to move that species toward recovery so that it is no longer uh required, so that it no longer requires the protections under the ESA. Um, so this is just a, a timeline to kind of put us, you know, put it in perspective. That recovery plan was challenged and withdrawn in two thousand eight. In two thousand eleven, we issued a revised recovery plan that had thirty-two recovery actions, kind of which uh centered around barred owl. Uh, the revised critical habitat rule was issued in two thousand twelve. That was also challenged, recently revised, and it is now final. Oh, sorry. And then in two thousand fifteen, the service received a petition to uplist the northern spotted owl from threatened to endangered. And in December twenty twenty, we made a warranted but precluded finding for uplisting uh primarily because of the threat from the barred owl as well as habitat, ongoing habitat loss and increases in habitat loss for more extreme um fire behavior and fires with greater patches of high severity and habitat loss. Uh, the warranted but precluded finding, um, it basically means it is warranted for uplisting because of those threats but pre- precluded by other higher priority workload and status reviews. And then an additional conservation effort um was the barred owl removal experiment that basically uh went from twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen throughout the range. So just to touch on the threats, um when it was first listed, initial threats were habitat fragmentation, um habitat loss and the barred owl. But now the barred owl is considered the primary threat, uh followed by that habitat loss. Um, we've also, you know, all, are all familiar with the checkerboard ownership and landscape patterns and our private partners, you know, work well. Um, for the, as I understand it, I don't work very much in Section Nine and Section Ten, but uh the THP review process through Cal Fire has become very streamlined. And there are, there's attachments A and B, you know, that are integrated into timber harvest planning that take the spotted owl into consideration. So for barred owl expansion history, um, there's a lot of, you know, hypotheses about how they moved um from the eastern United States across the west. And this um species, it is native to North America, east of the Great Plains, and their range expansion began a little over a hundred years ago in the early nineteen hundreds. And I just wanna, you know, make a deter, or delineation here, you know, an invasive species can be any kind of organism. It can be an amphibian, like the cane toad, a plant, an insect, a fish, a muscle, uh bacteria, or even that organism seeds or eggs uh that aren't native to the ecosystem and result in harm. Um, invasive species can harm the environment, they can harm the economy, they can even harm human health. And there, those that reproduce quickly and spread aggressively with the potential to cause harm are labeled as invasive. So even though the barred owl is native to the eastern United States and this continent, it is considered invasive. And the progression, um, this map from La Vezzi two thousand nine is really sort of interesting. It shows the, the various progression from the early nineteen hundreds across the northern Great Plains, um, which was likely facilitated by changes to land management there as it was more colonized um with an increased number of distribution of trees and communities. And the lack of natural fire as well. So that's, and then it shows the first barred owl detection in Washington was in nineteen sixty-five in eastern Washington, and then in nineteen seventy-two in Oregon, and nineteen seventy-six in northwestern California. So pre nineteen hundred, um, this shows you the barred owl's range. And then by the late nineteen nineties, early two thousands sightings within the NSO, the northern spotted owl's range, which is this part here, um, were increasing um to the level where the barred owl was identified as a greater threat. Uh, we weren't really sure what the threat level really was, but the two species appeared to occupy very similar habitats. And we knew um from observation that the barred owl was slightly larger and considerably more aggressive. In talking with Robin Bound um about the, the barred owls that have been colonizing and being into the NSO's range, it, they're much more aggressive than their eastern counterparts. And there's been reports of them attacking people, you know, in parks up in Salem, Oregon. And that's, that's just, was a little, you know, I didn't realize that. And she shared that information with me, that they're just, they're much more aggressive and it's likely because of that initial colonization phase of a new species um moving in. But over the subsequent decade, um, barred owls definitely became more widespread across the northern spotted owl's range, and now they completely encompass both the northern spotted owl and California spotted owl range in the Sierra Nevada. So this map just shows you a little bit more local data. Um, is a courtesy of Kate, Kate Whitney Keizer at CDFW. She's the Spotted Owl and Barred Owl Database Manager. Um, she had provided this map. She actually just put it together um a couple of days ago, but it shows the barred owl detections in California between nineteen seventy-eight and twenty twenty. I guess the nineteen seventy-six detection is not included in here, but from what you can see, the, the periwinkle, the kind of lighter purple detections are those from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen ninety-nine, and then all of the dark blue is two thousand to twenty twenty, and Kate is still working on um some, um, data that needs to be appended, so that's the triangles. But it just shows you that increased density with a, a much higher density um along the coast in Del Norte and Humboldt Counties. Uh, today, there's nearly, I think it's two thousand barred owl records uh for the database across both species range. So for interspecific competition um information, like I was saying earlier, the barred owl is larger, um, it's more aggressive and it's more adaptable than a spotted owl. It's considered a habitat generalist, whereas the spotted owls of both California, northern and Mexican are habitat specialists. Uh, barred owl home ranges um are much smaller than a spotted owl home range, and there can be two to four barred owl territories or home ranges in the same space that a single uh spotted owl pair may, might occupy. Barred owls are also more um reproductive than spotted owls. They're, they have a higher fatality, um, their reproductive output is usually two to four young per year compared with the spotted owl, which is about one to two a year on average. And because the spotted owl is already struggling, um, and was, you know, the, obviously, it was listed um because of its reduced habitat, um, the effect of the barred owl, it just, just an added stressor. So our, our already vulnerable populations um are now having a much more difficult time withstanding that dramatic fast change and trying to respond to a, a higher level trophic competitor. And some of the research to date has shown the strong evidence that the spotted owl population declines are more pronounced in the areas where barred owls move into the range. And then those impacts are greatest where barred owls have been present the longest. There's, um, I'm gonna go into it in a little bit, but there's the long-term um demography studies across the range and the areas up in Washington as well as Oregon. The, the number of spotted owls that are now there, it's, it's dramatically, dramatically less than what it was at the beginning, um, when they were listed and even before because of barred owl pressure. So just a little bit more on interspecific competition, um barred owl presence. They, they impact the NSO's calling behavior, so it really impacts their ability to attract mates and pair bond and reproduce successfully. Uh, they affect the spotted owl's nest site selection, their territory occupancy, their survival and their recruitment. While both barred owls and spotted owls do use old forest habitat, barred owls are less picky about the habitat type they will use. Um, we have seen a shifting of NSO's use of habitat further up in slope position um than it was prior to the higher density of barred owl. Barred owls will tend to come in and colonize the, the lower slope positions, riparian areas, and in effect, you know, basically pushing northern spotted owls further up slope. Um, as I noted, they displace owls, they disrupt their nesting, they compete for food. Um, the spotted owl is, the northern spotted owl is definitely a habitat and prey specialist in terms of its primary food sources, which consists of northern flying squirrel, red tree wool and wood rats. And northern flying squirrels and red tree wolves are more associated with late successional and old growth forest um ecosystems. But wood rats um definitely are, are a higher prey availability, prey availability in early and mid-cerule stands. So that proximity, especially in our part of the owl's range, um, where the majority of the diet is wood rats, that proximity of mid to late successional forest stands that can support NSO nesting um with earlier mid-successual is important for the contributing that prey base. And then basically, you know, as a barred owl moves in and takes over a northern spotted owl's territory, you know, that, either that pair, you know, isn't able to find a new location or they're having to disperse further to find um a better territory or resident singles or, you know, prior territorial, territorial northern spotted owls are now considered floater owls, you know, they, they can't nest, they can't be successful. Um, they're having to disperse further, you know, to find adequate habitat. And then barred owls, like I noted, are generalists. They basically eat just about anything. As a result, they can occur at much higher densities and they are occurring in much higher densities than the northern spotted owl or California spotted owl could ever achieve. So as described earlier, um, in June two thousand eleven, the service issued a revised recovery plan and it included ten recovery actions that were specific to the barred owl. And that was twenty-two through thirty-one. Um, the more prevalent and common recovery actions that we work with the Forest Service or BLM or Park Service on are Recovery Action Ten, which is specific to conserving um NSO sites or territories along with higher value habitat um to provide that buffer um from barred owl competition as well as Recovery Action Thirty-two, which is high-quality habitat that is unoccupied by northern spotted owls, um, so that it can be available um for them, you know, in the face of barred owl or once and if barred owl management strategy is implemented um on federal and other lands. And then Recovery Action Twelve, which really speaks to holding on to some of those legacy features after disturbance such as a wildfire or insects and disease or blowdown. Um, those legacy features such as large trees, large snags, large downwood that take a long time to develop. So some more history for you on the overall monitoring of the northern spotted owl under the Northwest Forest Plan. Um, there's eight long-term demographic study areas and three additional study areas that have used um the same methods of annual survey for the northern spotted owl basically since nineteen eighty-five. And it's doing the callback surveys and going into known sites and determining if um the pair is still there or if it's a resident single or if they, if they reproduced that year. So there's a large, large amount of data that we have available on demography and year-to-year population changes for these study areas. And that's been the primary source for tracking demographic data across the range. And approximately every five years, the data from all of those study areas is synthesized into a meta-analysis. And the most recent one was published this last May. And it showed significant declines of six to nine percent, um, significant declines of northern spotted owl pairs of six to nine percent on six of the study areas and two to five percent on five of the other study areas. But most um notable in Oregon and Washington was that there had been fifty to seventy-five percent decline of the NSO population in those study areas since nineteen ninety-five. So that is a rapid decrease since nineteen ninety-five. So the main takeaways from the, the most recent meta-analysis or that barred owl presence on spotted owl territories is the primary factor that's negatively affecting their survival, their recruitment, and ultimately their population. And this is important because that affects numbers, reproduction and distribution, which are the three tenants of the Fish and Wildlife Services Jeopardy analysis that we undertake for projects. So it's just important to keep that in mind. And this um the graph, so we are down here and I am gonna talk a little bit about the Green Diamond, or not the Green Diamond, sorry, the Hoopa Valley Indian Reservation and Willow Creek Northwestern California Study Area in a minute, because those are the ones that are here in California. But this basically just demonstrates, you know, the annual or not annual, the the decline since nineteen ninety five through twenty eighteen uh for those sites or for the demographic study areas. And then this graph just represents that inverse relationship of northern spotted owl pairs declining and barred owl observations increasing across all of the study areas. And this information is available in the recent meta analysis that I believe I did send a link to, but I do have links at the end of the presentation as well. So Recovery Action Twenty Nine was um basically to test the feasibility of barred owl removal to determine whether or not it will improve conditions for spotted owls. Um the barred owl population range wide, it's estimated at three million. And the study um which ran um two thousand nine through twenty nineteen removed approximately two thousand four hundred eighty five barred owls. So that's considered less than one twentieth of one percent um of the barred owl's entire range. And the service initiated work on the experiment in the Hoopa Study, the the Hoopa Valley Indian Reservation Study Area in California um in September twenty thirteen, and then added additional study areas in Oregon and Washington in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Uh the Hoopa work will conclude this year, and Mark Higley has uh he's been working on the final report uh for that part of the study area. But this map just shows you there were five study areas and five controlled areas, so one in Washington, two in Oregon, and then two in California, the Hoopa and Willow Creek and then Green Diamond. The results um from the study just real quickly showed that where barred owls were sorry, where barred owls were removed. Uh the annual NSO population stabilized at about point two percent, and I know that that sounds low, but it did stabilize in areas where barred owls were not removed, um the the decline was twelve percent annually. And from those results, you know, we basically take away that removal had a strong positive effect on spotted owl survival, but a weaker but also positive effect on their dispersal and recruitment. And while that point two percent decline sounds low, it's definitely better than twelve percent annual decline, and we wouldn't expect a rapid um increase or a higher, you know, a lower decline just because it's gonna take time for spotted owls to basically respond to the removal of the barred owl. So bringing it a little bit closer to home, this is the Hoopa Valley Indian Reservation and the Willow Creek Study Area, so the the removals occurred on Hoopa and that started in twenty thirteen. And they did not occur, you know, we have the the paired control study, they did not occur there, so this just kind of puts that in perspective for you in terms of location. And then at the courtesy of Mark Higley, who's the wildlife biologist for Hoopa Tribal Forest Street, um I'm gonna play this short time lapse video. And it basically shows um between nineteen ninety two and twenty nineteen spotted owl density, um barred owl detections on the on the reservation, so there's sixty NSO, you know, territories that they looked at. These are historic and current territories, so in nineteen ninety two, which is the starting point for this time series, thirty NSO territories were occupied, so the light green, that's a that's an area that's occupied by an NSO pair. And then the gray areas are those historic territories that didn't have occupancy in that year, and then the blue dots are barred owl detections, so in nineteen ninety two, there were thirty NSO territories occupied and thirty that weren't, and then six barred owl detections. So just as we play this, keep in mind that barred owl removal began in Hoopa in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. So there was definitely an increase and impact um in that two thousand five, two thousand six, seven time period. And in twenty nineteen, we've got eighteen NSO territories with pairs and twenty three barred owl detections. And while that might not seem like much sorry, messing up there. Well, that might not seem like much change from the the management, um Mark is very secure in his conclusions and recommendations that the barred owl removal maintained the population at or near the twenty thirteen level. Uh the raw data that they have from Hoopa suggests that there was a fairly dramatic decline in the number of territorial spotted owls during the five years prior to twenty thirteen, so you could see that in that two thousand five, two thousand six period where there was a definitely an increase in barred owl detections. And then by twenty thirteen, barred owls were clearly well established. They were occupying more than sixty percent of all of the historically occupied territories on their reservation. And the removal that has occurred between twenty thirteen and at least twenty nineteen um has kept it stable at that pre twenty, you know, that twenty thirteen level. So the the three um slides are along the left side that shows the trend in spotted owl occupancy of those sixty sites. Again, the darker green is owl pairs, the lighter green is um single NSOs, and then the gray is unoccupied sites, so this top diagram is what the condition was in two thousand four, middle is two thousand nine, and the bottom is twenty thirteen. And this um is the cumulative total of all the barred owl detections through twenty seventeen um, and this bottom right is twenty seventeen, um barred owl removals are the dark black squares. So I'm actually looking forward to um Mark Higley's results between twenty or twenty twenty and twenty twenty one. Recovery Action Twenty Nine, which was designed, the experiment to see if barred owl removal could be effective, is going to inform Recovery Action Thirty, uh which is the development of a barred owl management strategy. Uh Robin Bound is heading up that effort right now with um this, you know, interagency working group and the barred owl science team, um it includes representatives from Washington, Oregon and California at the state level as well as the the service level, as well as the forest service level. Uh Sarah Sawyer has been, you know, actively working with us on that strategy and getting the modeling work together for it for both uh the California spotted owl and northern spotted owl. Um the service will initiate, of course, their environment environmental review with an extensive public review and comment process before we make any sort of management decision regarding the strategy. So we're very concerned that without barred owl population management, that the spotted owl is likely to go extinct in some parts of its range. We're definitely seeing that effect in that trend uh in Washington and Oregon with those demographic study areas. Um the barred owl management strategy will look at actual physical lethal removal. It may also consider, you know, depending on comments that are received from the pub from the public, other methods, you know, potential sterilization, um just other methods. And while we agree, it's, you know, I'd like to read you a a quote from one of the the spotted owl experts who says, yes, it is a little distasteful to go out killing owls to save another owl species. And it is gut wrenching nonetheless, from a conservation standpoint, knew the barred owls are out competing spotted owls and the populations are going haywire. So and almost always, the barred owls, the spotted owl's worst enemy, they reproduce more often. They have more young per year and they eat the same prey. And they also outnumber spotted owls in many areas of their historic range. So it's not just spotted owl versus barred owl. The barred owl here did not coevolve with the wildlife of our western forests and prey base hasn't developed those adequate defense mechanisms and behaviors to avoid predation by this generalist predator. Again, they occur at much higher densities. They use a greater diversity of forest types than northern spotted owl or California spotted owl. They and inhabit meadows, swamps, riparian areas, hardwood forest, oak woodlands, mixed conifer um pine, you know, ponderosa pine dominated forest. They basically can live anywhere and eat anything. And because of their sharp and rapid increase in abundance, they're exerting a tremendous influence on those other organisms that live in and depend on our forest ecosystem and more. So some other potentially affected species in do include um the western screech owl, uh which is known to be preyed upon by barred owls, fisher, uh which could be impacted by competition for prey or possibly direct mortality of fisher kits. And then various other small mammals, amphibians, reptiles and other birds. And so this diagram attempts to illustrate the tro- trophy cascade that can occur um from barred owl and northern spotted owl and the indirect impacts that it can have on prey and those ecological relationships. There is concern that, you know, the large impacts that the barred owl could have on western gray squirrels or northern flying squirrels or stellar's jays could affect, you know, seed transport and berry producing shrubs and trees, um and then impacts to soil process processing as well, because barred owls are consuming more and more burrowing mammals and linamorphs, the laga worms or or rabbits. So it's more than just a potential, you know, obviously, we know they are affecting the northern spotted owl, but they could also very well impact these other species and this predator prey relationship. So most studies examining trophy cascades focus on how the loss of the native predator influences an ecosystem. In the case of the barred owl, it's the addition of that top level consumer that can result in a restructuring of the community or a potential local extinction of other species. There's some current conclusions about what we know. We know that barred owls are displacing northern and California spotted owls, and they can have wide ranging effects on other species in the NSO and CSO's range because of the impact to those prey and predator relationships. Basically, that the loss of biodiversity and a change in predator prey and ecological function uh because of that trophy cascade, and that can include severe ecological and economical impacts. We also know that this experimental removal um from the results can be an effective management tool for reducing the threat to both the northern spotted owl, which is listed and has a recovery plan that the Fish and Wildlife Service is mandated to implement under the ESA um as well as the California spotted owl, which isn't listed. But a not warranted finding for not listing the California spotted owl was made because um barred owl management was, you know, basically planned for future um helping, you know, the California spotted owl. We also know that continued habitat conservation and strategically placed and designed active forest management are important. It's not just the removal of the barred owl that is going to contribute to recovery of the northern spotted owl. It's also active management um to basically, you know, return some of those ecological processes that have been missing from our landscape, such as, you know, recurrent and lower and mixed severity fire. And so that's why we we do encourage active management in both the recovery plan and the critical habitat rule. But it needs to be thoughtful and well placed and strategic and take into account known spotted owl sites and that higher quality habitat. And then we also know that the current trends and the predictability about future trends in NSO populations uh suggests that they will face extirpation of competition from the barred owl is not um reduced in the short term. So these are just a few of the websites that are available um that provide a little bit more information on barred owl ecology and life history. Others, the website on the experimental removal. Um there's the annual report for the experimental removal. There's the summary of the removal um and the results by Weems et al. There's the state's website for invasive species management and for barred owls. And then there's more information on the potential trophy cascades that could be triggered by barred owl expansion. And like I said earlier, um Robin Bound will make herself available if the collaborative or anybody, you know, if the collaborative would like to hear more details about the experimental removal or the future development of a management strategy. Are there any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead, anybody with some questions?
Yes, uh Diane Richards had my hand up.
Okay, go for it, Diane.
Thank you. Um Christine, I'm wondering, first of all, I want to make a statement that it's very disingenuous for us to call the removal of the barred owl. It's the killing of the barred owl, okay? We if other species, we would say killing, not removal. We're not taking them somewhere. So it's a killing of a species that is native, etc. Secondly, I don't understand why in this presentation that you did not discuss the interbreeding of the two together. They interbreed, and why did you not discuss that?
There was no um intent on my part to exclude um information and research findings that we do have that this northern spotted owl will interbreed with the barred owl. It was It wasn't intentional. We have observed that, the hybridization and that intergression.
You haven't just observed it. You have studies on it that the F1 is a viable owl that they, they, this to me, this appears to me to, for the spotted owl to interbreed with the barred owl, it's basically a survival strategy that's natural. And you are basically, our agencies that are supposed to protect the animals are interfering with this strategy and did not go on further to the F2s. They limited the studies that I understand to the F1 and not, did not carry on to the F2s, which I think they should, to see how that, that the barred owl, yes, is a stronger, better, broader, more generalized predator, raptor. Why maybe it is benefiting the spotted owl? And why aren't we looking at that more intensely? It's basically, folks, that this is as if we we only like yellow labradors, but we don't like black labradors. So we're going to kill the black labradors without seeing whether, you know, the puppies from that litter are going to be fifty fifty, yellow and black or whatever. Are we going to have another color? We're going to have brown labradors, et cetera. I think it's very insufficient study on the in, the interbreeding of these two for us to then go ahead and say, let's kill them. And I would like that to be addressed very, very intensely.
Okay, thank, thank you Diane. So we certainly could ask Fish and Wildlife Service to come back at another time and, and present the information they have on the interbreeding issues and and continue the discussion. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got one.
Go ahead, John.
So how do you respond to the what appears to be that the Fish and Wildlife Service is putting their thumbs on the scale of natural selection? And the owl pretty much got here with, looks like some assist, but it's here and it's well established and it is a North American species. And then isn't the management strategy, it's going to be temporary, it's going to take a long term commitment. You can't just remove them from an area and expect them not to come back.
Correct. It, it, it would involve and is expected to involve a long term commitment. And Robin Bowne and the barred owl science team, the management plan, you know, development, they're going to be taking all of that into consideration, of course, to address, you know, the question, you know, regarding northern spotted owl, you know, and barred owl. You know, the barred owl is a, it's a wider ranging species. It is a generalist. It's not listed under the endangered species act. So because the northern spotted owl is federally listed, the service and other federal agencies have that legal and ethical responsibility to do all that we can within the confines of our respective authorities and funding to help prevent its extinction and help it recover. That being said, I think that, you know, there can be more discussion and information, you know, presented to address the concerns that Diane has voiced.
Okay, anybody else? So at this point, Christine, you could probably
I have a question, Pat.
Yeah, go ahead Larry, but I was going to ask her to unshare the screen so we can, yeah, there we go. See, everybody will, go ahead.
This is Larry Winter in High Park. My question is how the study didn't seem to incorporate loss of habitat due to fires? I think one of the papers you had sent us earlier showed five million acres of northern spotted owl habitat has been lost due to fires in the last five years. And so the presentation, like up in Hoopa area, it, it makes it look like that all of the gains in the, in the barred owl habitat versus the northern spotted owl was due to the barred owl or, you know, it, it didn't seem to take into account. Or maybe there wasn't loss of habitat due to fire that the barred owl was able to move in, but the spotted owl wasn't adept to that type of landscape. And so how did you incorporate fire into those numbers in the study? Cause I know it's a, has a severe impact on northern spotted owls.
Fires are definitely having, especially recently since the 2017 fires. I mean, we've had a, a rich, you know, fire history basically since, well, since 2000, if not before, you know, we had 2000, 2006, 2008, 2012 Bagley Fire, the 2014 West Side Fires on the Klamath National Forest, the 2015 Fires on the Shasta Trinity and Six Rivers. Basically annual fire, but more and more severe, more and more widespread as each year has progressed. And the demographic study area reports that come out every five years, they do consider wildfire effects and other habitat management effects to an extent. But they're primarily reporting on, I mean, they're, they're reporting on, you know, the annual reproduction of the northern spotted owl, the annual site occupancy across those 11 demographic study areas. So they don't, they do take a hard look at other management actions that might have been occurring for the barred owl removal study and those results, they, as far as I understand it, they only looked at, you know, the impact of the removal in terms of the, the population changes or the NSO territories where they were removing versus where they weren't.
Great.
So that is a good question.
Well, once again, Christine, thank you so much. That was a very information rich presentation. We're going to need to, yes Diane.
One more thing. Okay, almost on what Larry was talking about. Was part of the study or studies concerned with the heavy ground fuels that we have? I understand that it makes the heavy ground fuels make the hunting of the spotted owl much more difficult for it. Was that incorporated, the actual ground fuels, the level of the ground fuels?
In terms of what they were measuring, as far as I know.
That they, right, the behavior of the, and survival of the spotted owl based on ground fuels, not just fire. For instance, of course, we know they burn up, the nests are burned, their, their trees are gone, there's this, that, snags, et cetera. But what about the heavy ground fuels, which is what we really are faced with, with not, non-management of the forest? I understand that that does impact them. It's a small owl. It has trouble getting, if it was, is more open, if the fuels are off the ground, they actually are better at their hunting. So was that taken into consideration in these, any of these studies?
It's taken into consideration in terms of for the, the demographic study areas and the conditions within those NSO territories that they're, that they're looking at. They are looking at the habitat metrics in there. So your stand composition, your canopy cover, your coarse woody debris cover, that is taken into consideration in terms of how each site is basically functioning, you know, in terms of its successional stage or the owl pair. In the barred owl removal experiment data, they did not look at habitat metrics. They simply looked at removing, you know, areas of the demographic study areas where they had a control where no removal occurred versus areas where they did remove barred owls before.
Okay, so again, thank you very much for your presentation Jenny. Thank you for joining us today too. I got a feeling you'll, you guys will be back talking about spotted owls and barred owls again. And so we are behind schedule as probably we all figured we would be because we always, I always put too much on the agenda. So the last thing that we had on the agenda was to begin to look at this idea of what I'm calling a kind of collaborative reset. Maybe I'm just totally off base and I was just being self critical of my own inabilities to facilitate and manage the group. But I don't know where the, what you all think, what you want to do with that subject, begin the discussion of, it just seemed to me like, well, as, as, as evidenced today, we mostly have gotten reports, you know, and responding and, and, and to reports. Not what I thought the collaborative originally wanted to focus on, which was helping the agencies collaboratively to get more done. So I'm just going to open it up to anybody who wants to jump in or we can not talk about it.
This is Joseph.
Joseph.
I have some thought, I have some thoughts about this. You know, in the, the last two years, the magnitude of these fires had really thrown us for a loop. Our projects, many of them have been burned badly. And we have had to go to these Zoom meetings, which don't seem to be as effective as face to face meetings. But something that Larry brought up, and that's the need to do field trips. Whenever we have come to any major decisions, it's been out in the woods on field trips where we can see what we're talking about rather than hypothetical, this is what's going on. It just, it's just not the same. So I would say that we need to reset this to where if the agencies want our input and want us to endorse their projects, we need to go to the field, look at what is being proposed and see if we can come to some agreement that the agencies can follow. The other thing is the joint chiefs money. It just seems to be, thanks to Kelly and to Nick, you know, we've been successful in bringing money in and under the joint chiefs. But the collaborative really hasn't much say about it. What we get is, well, here's what we're going to do with the money. Not asking us what you want to see done. And what I've observed now, some of the projects that I think are very poorly designed, our joint chiefs money is going to them to be implemented. So I think we need to revamp the way that the joint chiefs money is distributed and to what projects it's going to apply to. And then if the agencies want our input and they, they need our input to do the CE's that have most of these projects are being done with. I don't think presenting us with a sketchy map and saying, oh, now we have collaborated with the collabor, with the collaborative about doing these projects, that's no endorsement in my mind. If they, if they need our input to do these projects, then we need to go to the field and decide if we want to support it or not. So we just need to do a reset that way that, again, you want our input, let's go to the field and talk about it.
Thank you, Joseph. So just a couple of thoughts on your, your thoughts. One on, first on the field trips. It always seems like it's a, it's a, it's a chore to schedule field trips on the fly. And I'm wondering, you know, we, we, we get, if it would help if we set up in the new year a separate almost schedule for field tripping? You know, if, if we have collaborative meetings every other month on the third Friday, what about picking a, 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 a standing day of the month in the alternating months? If we don't have a need to go on a field trip, we don't go, but at least people begin to build those into their calendar. Do you think that would work?
I think that would help.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, because I, I know, I know how busy I get, you know? And I know all of you've got a lot of other irons in the fire. And, you know, it could be a recreational trail field trip, you know, that needs to happen. You know, up in the NRA, it could be different. Doesn't always have to be a forestry fuels project, but anyway. Okay. And then my, okay, Larry?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in on this discussion. I think that Joseph's on the right track, but I, I would take it a little bit further than what Joseph did. I would say that we need to be consulted at the time when a problem or a goal is identified. Not after a project has been designed and then, then we comment on it. I think our role is best served when the Forest Service comes to us and says, or the BLM and says to us, here's our issue. This is what's going on in this particular area. We have a field trip. We go out there and look at it. We see if there's common ground and some kind of consensus about what needs to be done there. Then the project gets designed around what that common ground or consensus is. I think that's what we need to get back to.
Well, I, I guess that was part of my thought when I wrote my white paper is that we've gotten away from that early interaction. And I think again, having regularly scheduled, no, you know, if we knew every other month, we were, we had a chance to get together on field tripping, then we could begin to do that a little bit better.
This is Jerry.
Yeah.
I, I, I really agree with Joseph and Larry about the early on conversations. But I want to maybe reframe it a little bit and pull the curtain aside. The definition of resetting it is because something didn't work. So what have we learned over the last several years that's not working? That is causing us to have to have this conversation. Maybe that's where we delve into and see if that's fixable.
Yeah. So what are, what are people's thoughts on what, what, what is working, what isn't working?
This is Diane Richards. As I mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, I think that maybe we should go back to the table again. We originally had started to think about separating Trinity from Shasta. And while we were putting up our projects, some of our main and favorite projects, Six Rivers took off with our ideas, thank God, and started to implement them. And I think we're more aligned with the needs and the philosophy, the methods of Six Rivers. If we are not, we should consider either being standalone, but I think I would actually prefer to be a part of Six Rivers because they are doing tremendous work in the, in the same vein that we want to see done. And we're getting nowhere with the Shasta unit of, of Shasta Trinity. And I think maybe we should put that on the agenda and start to think about it. Because that's our problem. We're not getting anywhere. We're not getting anywhere. That's our problem.
So Larry, Larry Glass?
One observation I would have, I don't object to what Diane's proposing. I proposed it a long time ago, but whether that's feasible or not, I have no idea. But what I do know is one of the differences between the two forests is the continuity that Six Rivers gives us. When they work with the collaborative, whatever agreements that the collaborative has had with that forest have continued no matter who the line officers were. On the other side, on the Shasta Trinity, when there's this, and there's been a big upheaval lately. But when there's this constant change of people, the new people come in, they seem to never have been briefed by anybody as to what agreements have been reached and how, how, how to work with the existing collaborative and what the history is. And then they go off and start doing business like they did it wherever they came from. And that doesn't work. And I think that's what's caused the biggest need for a reset here in the last few years is there's been this huge turnover of personnel on the Shasta Trinity and no continuity of agreement.
And I, and, and I think I, I wrote a little bit about that in my white paper with the idea that that's also our, an opportunity because we now have lots of mostly new line officers and leaders in, in the Shasta Trinity. And I see line officers and leaders i- in the Shasta Trinity. And I see, speaking of which, Tara has her hand up, her little yellow hand up. Tara?
Pat, and, um, and thank you for the point that, um, we don't, uh, you know, internally, you, it doesn't seem like we've passed the baton very well. And I, I think that's a, a fair criticism. But as far as a, a reset goes, um, you know, I, I I would agree that it is a good time for a reset. Um, I, I am excited about working with the collaborative. Um, way in the front end, I'm, but I also think that, you know, what we're looking to accomplish and what a healthy forest looks like, it's, it's probably a good time to kind of reset our, our, uh, our measuring stick for what that looks like based on the, the severe, um, fires we've been getting and, and what, what is, um, what is an effective treatment and, and on what scale? Uh, so, and, and, you know, we talked, you talked briefly about the Joint Chiefs. And so I, I'm really excited. We, you know, we have rack monies available. We have Joint Chiefs. We have, um, a lot of funding opportunities, but not a lot of areas that are covered underneath that. So being strategic and we're with the collaborative and working with our partners and stakeholders to, to identify large chunks of ground where we can accomplish small things, um, to benefit, uh, a kind of important, at least to me, but I, I look forward to the, to be able to sit down with the collaborative on more of a, a one-on-one, one-on-the-whole collaborative, uh, basis to find out, you know, to hear your thoughts, to see if, if, um, if you're, if you see the forest, forest health the same way today as you did, you know, six years ago and, and what we can do to move forward. So I, I can't, I can't fix what happened in the past. Um, all I can do is plan for the future with an eye on making sure that, um, when I retire and I pass the baton to somebody, because I plan to be here for a while, that, um, that I do so in a way that doesn't, um, you know, that continues the smooth, uh, relationship we should have with the collaborative. So, um, I understand the frustration with the Trinity side of things with the Shasta Trinity. I, I can't fix that. I wasn't here. But I'm, I'm really looking forward to the opportunity of working with you folks moving into the future.
We had a comment in the chat, uh, saying, yes, Jerry, kind of agreeing with Jerry's, um, suggestion and suggesting an after-action review type of discuss- discussion. And I guess that might mean after a project is implemented or, or, or done, looking at it. And I, and I have these vague, vague recollections when I was sitting on the sidelines of the collaborative in their first couple, three years, that one of the, the action items of the collaborative was to really, you know, uh, look at what's working, what's not working, making it an iterative corrective kind of process. So that may be a part of it.
I have a comment, Pat.
Little Larry Winter, go ahead.
Um, one of the frustrations I've had, um, and that I don't think we address like we should is, is, uh, policy. Um, I don't know, maybe that wasn't part of our original, um, scope for the collaborative, but it, it just seems like, um, you know, like having only one planning team for the West Side. That's a policy issue. And we, you know, we, we can have great collaboration with, uh, Chris and, and Tara, but if, if they're handcuffed because of policy issues, um, it, it puts a stymie on all, everything we're trying to do here. Um, and so what I've noticed is that the NEPA process is a bottleneck that we are confronted with and that, I mean, I agree with, we should have, uh, lots of, uh, field trips because that's wonderful. Um, but we don't discuss policy anywhere in this county. And I don't know if the collaborative is the right forum to do that. But it, it, I don't know where else we do discuss policy issues. And I think that's something that's really important for us um, in these days. And so is that something that we should start addressing?
Yes, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure, you know, I mean, o- on what level or, or kinds of, of policies?
Like, I brought up, I brought up the idea that, um, or the, the fact that, uh, our congressman doesn't have a representative at these meetings at all. And so we're not collaborating with our federal representative in, in this forum. And that, um, that would be a good start.
Okay. So, um, and then certainly, you know, looking at and, and do places where we might be able to advocate to, to take care of some of the bottlenecks. I mean, the, the staffing issue, the loss of staff over time, um, you know, is certainly, you know, something that has critically affected the ability to get things done. Uh, Chris and I have talked about that recently, you know, and, and, you know, bigger than us, but I'm going to say it just because I believe Tara has a guest, a, a member of the Board of Supervisors with us. But certainly, you know, the, you know, their ability to recruit and retain employees is definitely affected by things like lack of local housing. You know, that they can't, you know, if, if somebody can't move here, you know, how do they, how, even if they come to work for us and they continue to live in Reading, how do they become invested in our community? You know, and, uh, the, you know, being a part of the community is a big, a, 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 a big part of, I think, that collaboration over time. So Carol wanted me to re- remind ourselves that in the earlier days of the collaborative and it kind of collapsed, maybe five years ago, was the collaborative being more engaged really early on in the sense that we would be a part of the discussions with the agencies about program of work, what actually gets on the program of work and where it fits in the program of work. I think when I first started getting involved, we had a, one of the worst meetings I've ever been a part of, uh, that was supposed to be a program of work meeting that was all, all of us and one member of the Forest Service. Um, so, so that's an area maybe where we need to kind of reset our, um, our sites also. So anybody else, and, and feel free, I mean, this isn't just for the collaborative members. You know, members of the agency certainly jump in here too. And I, you know, I want to be sensitive to our time, uh, and everybody's time also.
Pat, Jerry, again, early on, there was a, a program of work committee that was supposed to meet with the agencies. And at one time, we were actually, members were actually invited to the ID team meetings where they were devising, uh, the resources to implement programs and looking for input at that level. And that certainly, uh, I mean, again, not personally, but Chris, it was a great map, but you know, uh, we weren't there, nobody was there from the collaborative to even discuss what you were doing before you were looking for input and approval of a map now. So that's also reflects other comments about let's be on, early on in the process.
Chris?
So, so, you know, and I, and I struggled with this because, um, I really want this to be more than a, here's my map, tell me if you like it. Um, I think that for me at least, and I think for a lot of people, it's helpful to have a starting point to, to, to operate from. This is, and I've said many times, but I know that, that there is sometimes that feeling when you, there's a map, that means that's the design. That's not the design. What, what happened really was that, um, you know, the Monument Fire, I forget, I forget when the Monument Fire was finally contained, but I think it was last month. Um, the McFarland Fire was contained before that. We had an opportunity, uh, with West Side staff, folks like Scott Robinson and the Timber staff, we had an opportunity to go out and look at what had burned in the McFarland Fire. We didn't really have that opportunity to do that in the Monument Fire because it was still burning. And so in the process of looking, looking there and looking at what was there, we found opportunities. That's what we did. We found opportunities. And I thought it would be useful to take those opportunities and put together a proposal. That's what it is. It's a proposal. At the same time, I feel that if we want, if the collaborative wants, and I know the collaboratives talks a lot about wanting that economic role, uh, wanting that economic component. If we want to have an economic component, if we want there to be, you know, actually timber sold from, um, from work that we do, I believe, and everyone I've talked to agrees that we've got to get something out soon. So, you know, consider a proposal, consider an idea. We haven't had collaborative meetings in a while. Maybe, uh, maybe in the future it'd be good for me to reach out to Kelly and say, hey, we need to have a meeting in October. Uh, but for whatever reason, you know, we just weren't, you know, the fires were still burning. Uh, you know, there was a lot going on and there wasn't a meeting and it didn't seem like that was the time to schedule a whole meeting. But, you know, I want to work with you in the future to, to be able to do fire response in a timely manner. And, and I propose, and I put this in front of folks as something that we've thought that we could potentially do. But that doesn't mean that's what we're going to do. That means that this is what we potentially do. But if we're going to do anything, we need to do something soon. Uh, so that's, that's, hopefully that helps.
That, thanks, Chris. I, I really appreciate that response, but, um, I think one thing we have to realize is that the collaborative doesn't know when you are developing a project. So your point is well taken that maybe on your end, when you've got one on, you know, just on a notepad, you reach out to Kelly and say, hey, we don't need a field trip right now, but at least I'd like to connect with some of the collaborative members to start discussing how we're going to move forward.
And I, I think Jerry, that, that is, that's what we did this time last year when, um, Ted, acting essentially almost as the forest supervisor for both forests, was beginning to look at, you know, what was going to be the initial response to the August complex. And we had a couple of special uh, collaborative meetings to talk specifically about those issues. So I think certainly I'm open to that. I'm sure Kelly is also.
Yeah. One, one example was Joe Smales, you know, wanted to do a Corral Bottom project and met with several people. It never came to be, but it was that kind of the, uh, the, the ground level of developing that project. So I think that's kind of a good example of process.
Chris, did you have something to?
If I could just jump in and then I, I see others have their hands up, but I just want to, I just want to point one thing out in relation to the, the, one of the points that you folks made was that, remember Ted MacArthur wasn't forest supervisor until January. And so, um, you know, one of the things I feel like we've learned is a need to get started even earlier. Um, you know, on the, on the east side of the forest, uh, on the Shasta McLeod unit, they've actually got three prod- three post-fire projects already scoped. They were scoped in November and one was scoped in August. Um, and so the, the needs to be able to put together a viable sale early has, has really impressed itself upon me. So I definitely want to, want to work out a better way that I can communicate with the collaborative earlier. But just to remember what, what Ted was doing, he was doing that in January, a lot of that. And so we're trying to move it, move it sooner. So just, I just want folks to know. And then, um, that's all I had.
Okay. So, so Tara and Diane still have the little yellow hands up, but are those artifacts from earlier? Putting up with your hands?
I would like to speak.
Okay, Diane?
Yeah, thank you. Okay. So I, I'm wondering if maybe we should, um, strategize the collaborative efforts into three components. One, where it's our, uh, fire, our forest management, which ties into fire prevention by managing the forest. Two, what, um, Chris is just talking about, our fire response, uh, post-fire response should be like lightning, unfortunately, to use that word. Um, that would be really great because we can get that financial component. But I think we're missing, um, a very important third aspect of taking care of our forest. And it's actually firefighting response. The policies of the US Forest Service are not being met with, um, approval by the communities. I mean, I was here in Hayfork, they wanted the Forest Service out of here. They were so happy to see CAL FIRE because they believed they will fight the fire instead of management, manage it. And I think that a lot of California is thinking this way. And I think that we need to add that component in, um, here at the collaborative and see, can we, I don't know if we can possibly make any impact on how the firefighters respond to fire, because you want to take the, uh, the timber out quickly to, to be, basically it still has a financial component. How about we put the fires out before we spend billions of dollars fighting fires? We need to get on them right away with the way we used to. That's why we're talking about cameras. We don't have any fire, um, uh, lookouts anymore. We, all the things that worked in the past, we have just forgotten about them as if they don't exist. We don't, we can't do that anymore. We can't afford that anymore. Can we afford billions of dollars in firefighting? I think that the collaborative should take this bull by the horns and add it as our third, uh, component, uh, of what we, maybe we can make a change of, because this is not working. And I would tell you, you can ask anyone in Hayfork that the US Forest Service's name is mud here, big time. What they did was they managed this fire all the way around our valley. Instead of putting it out, they just kept setting the fire, going on, managing it until the rains came. Basically is what happened, instead of putting it out. And I mean, I had a front row seat uh, on this. I mean, I'm, I'm lucky that we're still here. We, it came so close to us, but I'm not the only one. And I think we need to have that conversation and add it as a third component. If we can possibly change what has become in California, a fire industry that doesn't want to go away. They like it. Everybody's making money on it, et cetera. I think that we can change that so that there's fi- a financial component, but not because we, we have big planes and, uh, helicopters going up and, and people coming from all over the world to put out the fires. I think that we should think about doing, taking that on. Thank you.
Okay. John Knight? You're, you're muted.
Sorry. Um, yeah, I just got to push back a little bit on Diane. Where, where, where are we at because of our suppression strategy for a hundred plus years? So, I mean, I just don't want to get into fire, a a big discussion on forest service tactics versus CAL FIRE, two totally different, uh, strategies, because the CAL FIRE protects the front country where there tends to be more structures and the Forest Service has the forest where, you know, it's the natural element that prevails. So I, I just piling on them for their, for their firefighting strategy and tactics. I, I just, I don't want to go there. So that's my.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, John. And we certainly don't have time today to, to sort it out. Uh, so it's about 12:30. So any other, um, any other thoughts? Oh, Joseph and Susan just kind of lit up. Do you have something? You, you're on, you're muted. Su- Susan, you're, you're muted.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, good. So, um, this is more specific, but it's regarding committees and specifically regarding the Cannabis Committee. And I'm thinking that would be very good because we've sort of lost our cohesion to have a Zoom for those who want to be part of the Cannabis Committee, which I feel that the, um, and I've imagined many of us do, that the trespass grows are still a difficult uh, thing to deal with on water and forest and wildlife in our county.
Kelly and I can get that set up. Yeah.
That would be great. So, because I think then we could also, um, get a clearer idea of what our sources of information are and work together more closely. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And then Keith Greenwood has his hand up.
Yeah. And Bob and I, Morris and I have talked about this before and, and he knows more of the history and, and maybe what the obstacles are, but I just want to encourage this, uh, particular group to be perceived as a, not an obstacle, but as a facilitator. And so that we can facilitate projects so that, uh, whatever forest and whatever line officer we're dealing with, we can at least give them some feedback on what they presented today. If you, if it's just on paper, it's going to be limited. But I still think, uh, we should give them some feedback, whether it looks good or it doesn't seem good, or at least help them to, uh, feel good about what they're doing tomorrow, because we don't meet regular enough to uh, be in their back pockets on everything. But, and I know that, uh, there's been a lot of time passed. Uh, I can hear that uh, with folks and, uh, maybe there is a loss of, uh, communication. But I do think, uh, I'd like for this group to, uh, restore its, uh, ability to be a facilitator of getting more done. And I, I know you want to do that, but let's find some ways to do that for them.
Great. Thank you, Keith. And Tara, you still have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Pat. Um, so a couple of things I came out of with this meeting is I will get the, uh, bear report links set out to Kelly and I'm hoping he will distribute them to all of you. Um, also, uh, as far as the, you know, involving the group early and often in, in kind of figuring out what the project will be. That's kind of why I sent everyone the ravage, uh, information. And, uh, as I start to get more information, I get feedback from that regional team, I will share that, I'll report out on that. Um, as far as being part of the ID teams, um, maybe we could, uh, you know, pl- plan a, a regular check-in with the collaborative from the ID team leader, if I can't facilitate, you know, the regular attendance. Um, so we could maybe just schedule regular check-ins with the collaborative as to where we're at and listen to what, what you guys are thinking and make sure we're, we're, we're on the same page. And then, um, lastly, I really like the idea of having a, a, a time set on a schedule for field trips. That way, as a, as a line officer, you know, just finding that, oh, I need to, I'd like to take people out to go look at this chunk of ground and, and get their thoughts and what we think needs to be done. I can just go find that date on the calendar and plug it in. Um, those are great, uh, action things for me that we can come out of today and, and, uh, and lastly, um, with regards to fire, um, I do want to let you know with the passing of the infrastructure bill, there was some, um, there were some things in there that were tied to fire suppression and a wildland firefighting series that we're hoping will, um, give us the ability to recruit uh, more firefighters. We had a hard time filling all of our vacant positions, um, because of the, the pay issue. Um, so, you know, as, as we start to figure out what right looks like, um, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, I want, I want to come and hear what you guys think. Um, you know, I'm, uh, is, I'd like to have a hand crew, um, on this side of the forest, um, on my unit, um, to, to deal with the Alps and deal with the wilderness and, and give us some more flexibility. But I'm happy to have those conversations with you all as well. Um, I will tell you, um, I, I want to defend, uh, a little bit, our firefighting staff that work very, very hard and that lives in these communities and, and tried really hard to fight fire in, um, and in circumstances that we just haven't seen before. So I just wanted to, to, to say that as well. So thank you for your time, Pat, and everybody else, and thanks for calling.
And wanted to welcome Jill Cox to the meeting. So Larry Glass and then Arnold, I'm not sure you kind of went, your picture moved around. I'm not sure if you're looking to talk. So Larry.
Yeah, there's a couple of things, Tara. I, I'm not, I'm not critical of the firefighters. The firefighters are awesome. They do amazing job under horrible conditions. Uh, the complaint that's really coming from the community is not about the firefighters. It's about the, it's about the overall preparedness and the staffing levels that, you know, we knew this fire season was coming way ahead of time. When it broke out, the resources weren't there. I mean, I think that's what's got a lot of people rattled. And it, it seems like it should have been something that was foreseeable, uh, that more resources would have been on hand, more people on hand. I know there's lots of, it's a whole other meeting. The other topic I wanted to talk about was, um, we used to have the program of work meetings and, and group that Joseph referred to. And that was, that was actually uncomfortable for everybody involved, but necessary. And I, I think that we need to really think about going back to that. And I, I think it would be a meeting that took place between Chris Losi and, um, and, uh, Tara and, and collaborative members that want to be on that group where we get to help them prioritize what's important to the collaborative. As far as their range of, you know, usually they'd come in with about sixty different topics on their program work. And we let them know, uh, what we thought was a priority and what wasn't. Now, sometimes they listened to us, sometimes they didn't. But I remember we fought really hard to get our pilot project moved up to being down from the bottom of the list up, you know, to the top third anyway. And it was helpful. And I'd like to see us kind of go back to doing that again.
Okay. Uh, so we're kind of running out of time. Anybody, anything else?
Yes, Pat.
Yeah.
This is Larry Winter again.
Yeah.
Think, speaking about the program of work, um, is it really a thing anymore? I mean, you know how long a pilot project's been on the program of work? And I know how long the Heimpong project's been in the po- program of work. And I continue to see things get bumped ahead of it due to fires. Uh, the Crowe Bottom project is out, appeared out of nowhere. The Forest Service has timber targets that they have to meet. And so, uh, they bring projects to the table without our collaboration. And that, uh, you know, program of work is non-existent as far as it being an effective method of getting projects moving forward. It, from my experience and, and I was part of that subcommittee at the time too. And, uh, eh, eh, early on, it was a, it was, I was very optimistic that, that we could help prioritize projects for the Forest Service. But with these reoccurring fires every year and with their limited staff, um, the program of work just gets halted. And that's where I continue to harp on, we need to discuss policy so we can talk funding. More manpower, resources for the Forest Service, but we're not addressed. We, we address it in our complaints, but we don't have any, uh, a really constructive way of trying to move that, uh, dial to a better, uh, result. And so.
Right. Thank you.
Anyway.
So Arnold. You're, you're muted. Oh, there you go.
No, I'm not. I think we should, uh, bear in mind that, uh, the old program of work, a problem we ran into was even after we prioritize stuff, the forest, um, or maybe, maybe I could say the supervisor's office, um, didn't coordinate, didn't prioritize between different districts. So that when we finally got our pilot project elevated to important on the South Fork Unit, it turned out, a year or two went by, it turned out that the planning wasn't occurring at all because, uh, the forest had higher priorities or because the forest didn't, didn't provide the direction. So, um, I like to say that the Forest Supervisor's Office needs to get engaged in how we, how we interact with the program of work. It doesn't need to be the primary contact, but it, by golly, we got to have the forest supervisor providing some direction and leadership on, on the Forest Service side.
Yeah, that's kind of my recollection too. Okay, anybody, anybody else? So I have a question of either Chris or Tara, maybe. Um, or Kristen, if she's still on it, but, so we're, we're still in Zoom world. But I, I, I've been hearing, you know, a little bit of chatter that possibly the Forest Service might begin to uh, allow in-person meetings sometime after the new year. Is that, is that real?
How, I, could you repeat that? My computer?
Are we going to be able to have live meetings after the new year?
Oh, um, yeah, I think we'll be able to move that after the new year. You know, we've had some, um, already, and if we meet the, the hazard analysis and have our precautions in place, we can, we can do that. You know, in a room during the winter time, if there's not a lot of, you know, a lot of people there, we could probably carry that off too. But, um, you know, I definitely can check and make sure we're in alignment with what the rules are for the agency folks.
Okay. Cause I was thinking, eh, 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 our next meeting is in, in January. And if we're not ready for live, live, everybody in the same room, uh, if you guys aren't able to attend, we have been successful the last couple of weeks with the Resource Advisory Committee having, using the Board of Supervisors chambers. So the people who wanted to be, want to be live can be live, but other people can join, uh, by Zoom. So maybe that's a potential, an option for January until we get our feel a little bit better. And, and our, our, our mistress of the Zoom is, is there in Tara's room.
Hi, everybody. Um, hey, I just want to let you know that I'm up against a little bit of a challenge. Um, as far as the next RAC meeting is concerned, I, we had two of them run successfully through that using the county's Zoom license. And I've been told by the deputy clerk of the board that I can't have that license for December. And I'm, I'm going to question that a bit. Um, so just just know that that's something I have to work out.
Jill, is that, is that something that we could use a separate login for? Because we have a pro count for that, like.
I think so. I think it's more of the, and it just, I'm, I'm just, I don't really want to speak to this right now.
Yeah, we can talk about this.
So we can, I think I can fix it, but just know we need to do something to fix it.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Jill. Anyway. So may, maybe we can have a hybrid meeting in January if we can't have a live, live meeting. But I, I certainly look forward to seeing more of you in person. And with that, unless anybody, oh, Tara's hands up again. Nope, no, it's down. Okay.
Jill set me up. Jill set me up. She left my hand up. It wasn't me.
Okay. Okay. With that, I think I want to thank everybody for their, their time, um, once again. And we'll start thinking about how we might structure, uh, alternating months, standing date for field tripping. But in the meantime, Kelly will be working to schedule a field trip for the South Fork Management Unit's, um, McFarland project. With that, I think I'm, I'm worn out. I've been zoomed up this week.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your weekend. Enjoy some sunshine if you get it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Adio. Hi, everyone.
Hey, Pat, it's Diane Richards, since you're still there. Can you hear me?
That's jumped off Diane. Didn't talk about.
Don't we usually, don't we usually do agenda building? I mean, what just happened?
Uh, this has been a really intense week of meetings, like every day, all like, there's been a lot. So I think he was pretty much done, but we can, uh, maybe, uh, send out a request for agenda items, uh, via email and then, uh, then take.
But usually we vote on it. So I guess, I don't know if you can put up like a some sort of poll.
Yeah.
Or something of that nature.
Yeah, because I, and as far as, you know, I'm concerned there, we're, you know, like as far as like major topics, like the, the owl topic that we had today. Um, I haven't seen anything quite like that. Outside of some of the specifics that we've been talking about with regard to post-fire and all that. So, um, well, we'll start, uh, we'll do a request and then maybe we'll get a list. And then, um, then maybe we can just do sort of a, um, yea or nay kind of, uh, email, uh, acceptance of specific projects and get a some level of prioritization and then get that together for, uh, January.
And, and also, um, I think at one point we were using polls, but maybe you don't have that, um, ability anymore to poll the kind of thing.
Like in the middle of a Zoom meeting?
No, no, we had used it, um, uh, emails or something like that a long time ago where we, we would poll, like, do you want to do this or that? And, and we would all vote on it. It would often be the time or the date or something like that.
Usually those are, most of those have been related to scheduling, so like days and times and things of that nature.
Yeah, right, right. For like field trips and stuff, but, but since we didn't do the agenda, maybe we could, if you, I, you know, I don't know how that's done. I've never done one, but maybe that could be a way to put together our agenda.
I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay.
That's not.
I understand everybody's tired, but you know, we, I think we, we need to have more meetings. I think part of the problem is that we have had so few meetings over the past few years that we're not getting anything done.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if we're getting anything done, period. But, you know, we are not reaching any kind of, uh, unity. We're not, because we're not meeting. It's just too far apart. I think it's really hurting us as a collaborative.
And, and I think that was part of the, the issue too, is just that, you know, with these meetings being sort of abridged, you know, compared to the amount of time that we put into them previously, it's, it shows that, you know, we're having a hard time getting, you know, providing that kind of direction, I think.
Right. Yeah, the meetings before in person were like almost full day. They were like intense and we had people coming. It was, they were, I think we were doing something, or at least reaching consensus. And now we're just sort of skating. So that's great. I'm glad to talk to you, Kelly. Good to see you. You look great.
You too.
And I look forward to seeing you again. Okay. God bless.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work towards that for January for sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Take, take care. Have a good holidays.
You too. Oh, yeah. Happy Thanksgiving. Bye-bye.
We'll see y'all later. I shut this thing down unless anybody's else, else got anything.